Everybody for coming here tonight. This is going to...
A little closer.
All right, I thank everybody for coming here tonight. This is going to be a public hearing on our proposed nitrogen regulation, the Board of Health. Members, Amy Weingat, she's a board member, myself, Frank DeFelice, I'm chairman. Bob Brady is an associate member. Susan Burke is the department assistant. Bob Ethier is a head agent for the Board of Health. And Jay Tallaman is our lawyer for the town. I guess I'm going to start with, we're going to put the regulation up on the board here. And I'm going to start out with any questions we're going to have. And I, you know, if you're pro for it or against it, would you please say that when you get up? And if you would come forward to the mic to talk. So we'll start off with... Go ahead, sir.
I just have a comment. Can we just, you know, work through this whole thing and then if anybody has a question on 1.0, they can address that and then the next one? So we can kind of logically work our way through it?
Sure, no problem. We'll, I'll have Bob...
Just as a suggestion.
That's fine, I'll have Bob read it off. And then if somebody wants him to stop and has a question on it, just put your hand up, come on down. Go ahead, Bob.
I wasn't planning to read through it all.
Read it, people can look at it.
Okay, well, that's what I figured. And as people have had enough time to view each page, I'll keep scrolling. If instead it would be preferred that someone does read, I'd be happy to read.
No, no, but I don't know that has to be read. I guess maybe just say if anybody has questions for 1.0.
Okay. For anybody that doesn't know.
I want to ask a question. Please state your name. Tom Vicki. I'm a geologist and soil scientist, and I've done septic system research for 30 years. The previous Board of Selectmen put the kibosh on the third phase of the sewer program because the betterment fee for those people in the third area that was going to be sewed was somewhere between $18,000 and $20,000. And they thought that the homeowners screamed bloody murder about that, and so that was kind of put on the sidelines, at least temporarily. So that's, as I understand it, on hold. Given that number of $18,000 to $20,000, can you give this audience an idea of what the cost would be to construct the system? And then the yearly maintenance contract, which will be in perpetuity because as the regulations state, this has to be filed with the county deeds and that there has to be a lifelong maintenance contract on it. Additionally, what the yearly electrical costs would be? What the fuel costs would be to recharge the system so that it functions as a denitrifying system? What the general repairs are over the course of, say, a 20-year period, which is effectively the life of the system? What the monitoring costs will be? And then there's, I guess, an additional $50 on top of that that goes to the town for paperwork. So could you give us an idea of what those total costs would be for a person who's building a house over that, you know, 20-year period? Which would effectively be the lifetime of the system? There's a number of systems out there that supposedly can get to the 12 pots per million. I'm just going to give you the cost of the nitric system, which we got sent from us, from the contractor who produces it. And I'm just going to read it to you. The total capital cost, including all materials, engineering, oversight of construction, and startup, and an allowance for a typical installation, equals $24,000. Now, I want to read the line down below it, though. "The total capital costs do not include the septic tank or drain field. And assume a typical installation. With volume, the capital costs will come down. The annual O&amp;M costs have been fixed at the future year, 3-plus rate to avoid any confusion." And what they're saying is the annual cost, $660 a year. I've heard a higher cost than that, but I'm just saying that's what he's sending. And there's a couple of, I'm sure, septic installers here. The average cost of a septic in the ground might, roughly, $7,000 to $10,000. So you can probably add $7,000 to $10,000 on that $24,000. So you're talking anywhere from, you know, $31,000 to $35,000 on top of the maintenance contract. Now, you're going to go and add what you're saying, the electrical costs, to the system. And I'm sure, I can't give you that figure because I don't know what it is, but I give you a rough idea, probably a couple hundred a year. I think that maybe the ballpark, maybe somebody here can tell you what that figure is. I don't understand what you mean on the fuel cost. What, there's...
Well, some systems, maybe the nitrates might not, but some of them use methanol as a feedstock. So you pump methanol into the system, and that's what, you know, provides fuel to generate the denitrification process. But they don't all do that, but some do.
Okay. The general repairs? Hey, if the motor goes or something goes wrong with it, who knows?
Well, that's what I guess I want to know, like, in that kind of a caustic environment, you're not going to get 20 years out of a fan or a pump. So do you have an idea of what those...
Yeah, a pump usually runs $500 to $700, a pump for this type of system. The monitoring costs, I think I mentioned what they said, was $600 a year. But I don't believe that figure is absolutely correct because when these systems comes out and it goes onto a property, you're usually four times a year, it's quarterly, and it's usually roughly $250 each quarter. So you're looking four times $250, which is $1,000. And usually the first two years, you have to do it four times a year. Then they allow you to drop it down to two times a year. So there is a cost there on top of that. I don't know if anybody else got any questions or can help answer something to that.
Frank, I just want to correct something from the previous gentleman who spoke.
Could you get the name?
Dave Walton, District 3. I want everybody to know, we're here talking about a nitrogen system which would, has nothing to do with sewer charges, no betterment charges. This is individual homes, be it from scratch or be it adding bedrooms. It's still, the definition is frightening because it still has loopholes in it. The word permit comes back in this dozens of times, and you want to know what all these permits mean. There's nothing in there that explains that a household of one or two people can't maintain it. These are all things we have to talk about. But it's not a sewer issue, and to also to correct the figure, just to point, the third sewer issue the gentleman talked about was $35,000 to $40,000 that people were upset about. The present Oakdale people are the ones $18,000 to $22,000. But this is not what we're here for. This is nitrogen supposedly for brand-new buildings, and you can define new construction as maybe putting a second floor on your house? I don't know. But that's what we're here for, this, not sewer. Thank you.
Yeah, basically what we're talking about, a new construction, is a new home being built in the town, not additions or anything like that.
Basically or exactly?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, I'll read the definition of new construction. "The construction of a new building for which an occupancy permit is required or an increase in the actual or design flow to any existing septic system. To qualify that, if you choose to put an addition on your home, or let's say add on to any part of your structure, garage or otherwise, and it would increase the flow, and the things like adding a bedroom clearly would increase the flow, then you would be subject to a new permit to do so, and thus you would have to conform to these regulations. An increase in the actual or design flow means any increase of flow in excess of the approved design flow in the most recent disposal works construction permit. An increase in flow includes, but is not limited to, increasing the number of bedrooms of an existing home." That's the definition. That definition will be used throughout the document, just to be clear. I'm going to continue to scroll through this as we discuss whatever is important to everybody. And if there's any question, if I'm going too fast, by all means, tell me to slow down and I'll back up.
Sure.
Yes, Howard Smith, West Wareham. And yes, I am a sewer contractor. I can stand up here and speak in favor of this and put money in my pocket, but I am opposed to it for many different reasons, and I hope to bring up some of them through the course of this evening. First of all, this regulation is intended to enhance existing and applicable regulations, excuse me, regulations by Mass DEP. How is it, what regulations, briefly, I know it's probably lengthy, but briefly, what are their regulations pertaining to this and how is this going to enhance it?
Repeat that again, I'm sorry.
It says, "This regulation is intended to enhance existing and applicable regulations by Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection." So basically what I'm asking is, in a nutshell, we don't need a long oration, what does DEP have in place that this regulation is going to enhance?
Well, yeah, if you have to put a Title V on your property, you're just looking at a tank, at distribution box, and a system. They're talking about an alternative system which will take away nitrogen, which the septic doesn't do. So that's what I guess, that is basically what the document... All right, what I just said was, basically, if this wasn't in effect, then they would be putting in a regular Title V system, which is a tank, a distribution box, and a system that doesn't take anything nitrogen out, whereas this does. And that's where the DEP would enhance it.
I realize that. So then basically, DEP doesn't have a lot in place regarding nitrogen-reducing septic systems, correct?
In regards to what?
But it says they have regulations pertaining to these types of systems.
Yes, they do. Right, it's 19 pots per million, what the DEP says, that we're allowing out there.
All right, fine.
Hi, my name's Nazir Al Qalasi. I'm a builder. If somebody don't understand me, please just raise your hand. A couple of things, I'm a builder in town. I probably did over 100 septic system Title V over the last 15 years. Not one failed. These new regulations, I want you to understand, that also apply for additions. So if you add a bedroom, it's going to apply. Secondly, I have one system in place that was a trial we did in Charske Mountain Road, and it's about $2,000 a year. You need a telephone line for it. You need four times inspection a year, four times. Electric, maintenance, motors, fans, pumps. It's, the cost is phenomenal. The lady who the house was installed for, it was my girlfriend, she actually rented the house. Now she couldn't afford it, moved to a house, to a small place, so she could afford it because of that issue. It keeps increasing, increasing, and breaking. Another thing I want to pay your attention to, if a lot of people thinks if you make this regulation, you stop builders from building homes. I'm a builder, it's not the fact. The fact is, the consumer's going to pay for it. The builder is not, he's going to pass it to you, you, your cousin, your niece, your nephew, whoever. And a lot of people, some people come with these regulations trying to be hero in someone else's expenses because they have the house or their septic or their sewer. What the heck, they'll become a hero. Little we know, maybe they're soliciting for a fast company, we don't even know. They bring these regulations, these house regulations, to people, to a community, it's considerably around other communities in town, it's poor. We're not Marion, we're not Sandwich, and those towns don't even have these regulations. Title V works great, it's been working for over 30 years, great. The, the cost is acceptable. It's been, like I said, it's been working great, and compared to the 12 per million, it's ridiculous, the 12 pots per million, because, like I said, no other towns in Massachusetts accepted these things. And they come to impose it in Wareham. Wareham can't afford it, people can afford it, people can pay their sewer. You know? Thank you. And another thing I want you to pay attention to also about the... Let me think. Give me just a minute, how I want to put it to you. That's right. So anyway, it is costly. So you have to think about it, very, very costly, and the long term of it, it's a problem. And like I said, Wareham's always been 20, 22,000 people. And the last 10 years, they moved 20% or 30% to sewer, and the sewer plant treats nitrogen. So it's not this big detriment that we're bringing in and we're bringing in. It's going, they doing more sewer. It's taken a lot of stress of the, like, the septic, septic's are building great, no failing, no problems. And it's, the Board of Health does a great job and everything, I want to appreciate what they do, but it's their job to stop it because they're the ones who are going to be blamed. You know? So we got to be careful, so those people are going to be knocking your door and blaming you.
We are paid.
Yeah.
They only complain, we are paid.
Yeah, so we pay, I mean, the consumer pays, you get blamed for somebody to turn like, oh, he did something successful. This isn't the case. People can't afford it, especially these days. Yeah, want to do something better, just start making more sewer. That's better. So think about it carefully, and I don't, I mean, you guys all know me, I work in town, I don't think you should adopt this article, it's going to haunt you. Thank you, good luck.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ario Leiva, I'm the president, CEO of the Cape Cod Canal Region Chamber. We represent Wareham, born in Sandwich, but in particular, we partner with the Plymouth Area Chamber. We are an economic development corporation awarded by the state, and we recruit businesses in the area and try to retain jobs and job creation. And we also work with the residential community in many, many ways, giving scholarships and food pantries, because we want to balance growth with the business in residential communities so everybody's working together. Having said that, we stand opposed to the regulation for several reasons. It has an economic development impact, and what that means is that everybody is out there talking about job creation, how can we get the economy moving? And then regulations at the local level sometimes inhibit and impede that. And that's a big problem, because all the way up to Washington, down to the State House, many, many people talk about economic development and job creation, and then at the local level, what happens is that regulations are adopted to inhibit that, and that just stops everything in its tracks. So neighboring communities don't have these kind of regulations. So we feel it would impede construction, it would hurt the local guy or woman who's in the construction business, and we believe that it would hurt overall economic development for business and residents, and we would oppose it, and we would strongly hope you consider that. Thank you very much.
Gordon Foote, Precinct 4. Previous speaker, I agree with 100%. I think there's quite a bit of economical for the builders, and you can't put in a one-bedroom or build a house, the amount of that's going to be ridiculous. But my big question was, is there any model towns in the state of Massachusetts that have been doing this? Or are we, for lack of better words, the guinea pig because we have so much waterfrontage? Is there any?
To my knowledge, there is none.
There is none.
I happen to work on the Cape, and as far as I know, there's none on the Cape that...
So because we have the most waterfrontage, the state wants to stop with us? Or?
It's not the state.
I'm not trying to be the bad guy with you guys, I'm just getting the information.
It's not the state. This has come before the Board of Health, before I got on it. And it's been, it's been at least a year in the making, maybe even longer. And it's going to be a town regulation, and this, I just want everybody to know, is what we want to hear from you is what we're getting tonight, and that's what we want to hear. And then we're going to go and we will do something, some kind of regulation in regards to what we hear tonight and what we do study. But as far as I know, unless somebody else knows, I don't know any other town that does.
Okay. Just to further on that, I mean, all the income from this town, from Mr. Smith speaking and all the other small builders, which I'm not, it really, I think it's going to hurt them because of, this town, we have the most oceanfront property, but we also have these little cottages that are keeping all these small builders growing and keeping us around because times are tough right now, which, yeah, they're going to get better, but...
Gwen.
Yeah. I don't think we need to be the guinea pig.
Good evening, Eddie Pasevich from Briewood Beach. First of all, we are not the guinea pig. Falmouth has an exact duplicate to what we have, 12 pots per million for designated area. They call it the coastal pond overlay district, which requires 12 pots per million. Secondly, a Title V doesn't do anything for nitrogen. So all the Title V's you have, brand-new or otherwise, does nothing for nitrogen. Three, the costs that I've heard here are outrageous, outrageous. They are, they absolutely are. They are not factual, they are not factual. I'm afraid you do.
Well, we don't.
Well, okay.
Well, you tell the cranberry bro is not to throw so much nitrogen in there.
Great, that's absolutely great, except the major source...
Please, please let him talk.
Except the major source of nitrogen in our area is in fact septic systems, not cranberry pods, okay? Not cranberry pods.
Ed, please, direct here.
Okay. Let's see, there was so many issues here that were brought up that were incorrect, let's put it that way. The state and the federal government have declared both the Wareham River system and the Wewianic River system impaired due to nutrient loading, that's nitrogen, okay? If we allow this to go forward without doing anything to arrest the nitrogen problem that we have here, what's going to happen is the waterways are going to get green, they're going to get slimy, they're going to start to smell. Now, you just heard somebody from the Cape Cod Canal Chamber of Commerce say that this has an economic impact. Think of the economic impact that will have on Wareham when our major industry here is tourism. Who's going to come to Wareham to come to a beach that is green, slimy, and smells? That's what we're looking forward in the future. The other economic impact that seems to have failed for anybody to address is the fact that people who have put on, excuse me, paid for sewer, the $20,000 dollars. Every new house that's built on a Title V erases that person going on sewer. So you took 25 pounds of nitrogen, average, out of the system, you build a title, you build a new house, you put the 15 pounds back in. So that means everybody that paid for sewer in this town is wasting their money because it's going to be offset by new construction. Now, I'm in favor of this bylaw, I'm sorry, regulation. I'm also in favor of introducing a bylaw at town meeting, which is very similar to this regulation, and it's something that we have to address. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and if you don't mind heating for one minute, I'd like to clarify a few things. We jumped right into this tonight, and it's really important, but I think I'd like to share with you all what has gotten us to here from well over a decade ago, probably 20 years now. While the previous speaker did note that Wareham's River and the Wewianic River were identified as impaired, you should all know that Wareham has made extended efforts in turning that around. What he doesn't tell you is that it was actually Wareham searing the greater extent of our community that caused the Wareham River's impairment. Now, let me explain how that happened. 20 years ago or so, and don't quote me on the date because I don't know when it was exactly, the town of Wareham, in its wisdom, recognizing the need to protect its waterways, sewed all of Onset, all of Cranberry Highway, all of Indian, okay, maybe not all, but most.
I guess it was.
Indian Mount... Okay, I take it back then. The village of Onset, okay, Broad Cove, Onisit Heights, and there's probably a few peripherals to that. All of Cranberry Highway, to include taking septic sewage from Buzzards Bay, all of Indian Mount Beach, all of Hideaway Village, which was badly impairing Butterfield Bay. And we took all of that effluent, you all know what that means, right? All of that effluent, and we brought it to the sewer treatment plant, which then treats it, does not take nitrogen out, and puts it all in the Wareham River to the tune of a million-plus gallons a day, give or take. I'm just rounding figures. You need to understand. So now we took that concentration of effluent. Primarily urine is loaded with nitrogen, not so much the solid waste, but the liquid waste. And we put it into that river and have been doing so for 15 years. And all of a sudden, the science catches up with, holy crap, what have we done? And we said, they, the DEP and other officials, wow, we've got to do something about the nitrogen going into the Wareham River. So they told the town of Wareham, you have to put in improvements to take the nitrogen out of that treatment now, which the town did, to the tune of 20-plus million dollars, which was passed on to a greater portion of the community. Now, understand, we still have, or there was an agreement to have, 12 more neighborhoods added to now this sewage. Now, let's identify them. They're around the major waterways that we're talking about having been impaired. Let's start at Rose Point, Wewianic Shores, Briewood Beach, that's all of the Wewianic water. We come around to the Wareham River, we're on the block to do Oakdale. We did Parkwood Beach, Oak Street, and any other peripherals were included. There's a couple of neighborhoods left, there's a stall at the moment. Long story short, the improvements made to that plant, together with the improvements made in the ground, should take out a significant percentage of the load. We'll call it a load. That load is called pounds per whatever, pounds per acre, pounds per household, parts per million, milligrams per liter, you call it whatever you want, but it's still a load. And Wareham, actually, back in 2003, had the wisdom, this was before we increased the denitrification, the Board of Health regulated setbacks for new construction. It's been suggested that the Board of Health is sitting on its thumbs and doing nothing to protect Wareham's environment. That's the furthest thing from the truth. In 2003, pursuant to this same law, Chapter 111, Section 31, the Wareham Board of Health voted at its regular meeting held May 6th that year, 2003, to establish for new construction the setback requirement of 150 feet for all soil absorption systems, that's a Title V, for new, excuse me, from a water course, that's every water course in town, wetland, pond, stream, river, and all water wells. Groundwater flow direction also was supposed to be identified with any plan submitted. Now, that was wise, the state of Massachusetts only requires 100 feet. Town of Wareham had the wisdom to increase that setback. And now we're looking at the supposed threat that nitrogen is still polluting our waterways. Wareham has done such a marvelous job, we should all applaud ourselves for the force... We should all applaud ourselves for the foresight that we had over the last two decades. And now the science is catching up. It's been suggested that now it's all Title V's fault. Well, we made great improvements. We have municipal sewer to another 3,000 or 4,000 residences in the town of Wareham. Probably up near 8,000 or 9,000 total. That's an improvement, and it is costly. But it is the best way to take nitrogen out of the ground caused by solid and liquid waste. So just to give you a little bit of history, I think it's important that you understand that it's been proposed now that maybe we can do more by targeting just subsurface wastewater systems, that other than municipal sewer. And that's what this regulation is all about. And it is a draft. And it's probably not going to be the document or the regulation that goes forward, but that's the purpose of a public hearing. If we need to improve upon it because science and technology is improving, and I wouldn't suggest to you that we are anywhere near where we need to be, both with science and technology, then I would tell you that we need to work together. And this isn't about, you know, pointing the finger at anybody. This is about Wareham protecting its shoreline, its resource, its most valuable, which is why we all love this community the way we do. Thank you.
I'm Michael Lockyer, a little bit 15 access. Michael Lockyer, a little bit 15 access road in the White Island shores area. Now, I grew up in Wareham my whole life. I grew up in Cremeset Woods, where it was a septic neighborhood, and the septic tank was a bad system. It failed. You guys hold in-town sewage. And the impact on that area that it made with cleaning it up was considerable. Yes, the waste did happen to go down the Weymanic, which was a shame. But I think that this new system, for anyone, like, I know my neighbors want to add on rooms because they're going to be increasing their family. This law goes through, they can't keep their house. Then if they want to sell it, from what I heard, I don't think you can sell that house until you put the proposed upgrade on it, which means that now they're stuck. They can't increase their family. Now, with this proposed septic law, I wanted to bring in my mother-in-law into my house, add a room onto my house, a bedroom, which would increase the flow. I can't do that because she's in a bad situation where she's living. Okay, so now all of a sudden, I got to tell her no, and she has to go somewhere less desirable, all because of this proposed septic law. Now you have builders that are going to say, "Well, maybe Wareham isn't the place." You're going to have people that are going to want to put in businesses or whatever have you, and they're going to go, "Well, maybe Wareham isn't the place." And this just kind of reminds me of something that Mitt Romney did to the whole state of Massachusetts with Romney Care. This is something you all need. You all love it. You all got to have it. It is great. It is the best thing since cream cheese. Since Romney Care took effect, your insurance costs went up, your care went down. Okay? And now we have Obamacare, which has platformed off Romney Care, which is going to cripple the country. So now you look at the septic law, and alls you hear on it is operating costs that are astronomical to what a standard Title V system is. We are in the technological age. Why can't we find a system that would operate with less maintenance costs but do the same thing before we decide to put that into our town? And you guys already said town sewage is eliminating a lot of our nitrogen problems because they have already put the upgrades in place to do that. Why not explore more town sewage in this town rather than exploring Title V upgrades?
Thank you.
My name is Victoria Miles out of Three Tinkers Lane. And I live in my deceased father's house, John Miles, who lived here in Wareham for many years. He died in 2005. When my husband and I first moved to this town, we were rather horrified, to be frank, by the number of low-income housing and the government buildings, shall we say. Even right in the center of town, driving through, one would not feel particularly safe to be walking there late at night. And so now we hear these regulations. And these regulations, to me, do not seem family-friendly. It does not sound like a young family that wants to have more children. You're making it easier for them. But yet, the people who are alarmist about our environment, they're getting their needs met by just pushing this kind of stuff on us, by talking about green rivers and everything else. You don't need to have that kind of hysteria. I work in the public school, and I hear this sort of nonsense all the time. Earth Day is coming up on Saturday. The thing is, the global warming, they're pushing this on the students, and now we're pushing this on the community. I think that we can find solutions that involve personal responsibility, that do not involve making an already bloated government even bigger than it is.
Okay, my last comment was, I asked you not to make us a guinea pig, and you came right back with all your studies. And I appreciate all that, and I was impressed. What I'd like to know is, had any impact on what Seamass is dumping up there since the '70s? It's been flowing into the aquifer and going out in the Wareham River since the '70s. I mean, from East End River, East End Reservoir and up on, it comes on down through the slug, all the way down through Tyhonet, through Mill Pond, and into the Wareham River. And, I mean, you can't deny it. I mean, it's decomposing stuff, produces nitrogen. I just, I mean, I didn't hear any of that in the studies. Has there been any study on what is going on up there since the '70s? I mean, they're supposedly dumping ash. Okay, let's just say they have dumped ash for the past, since the late '90s. But about the mid-'70s till then, it's all decomposition, and it's right there on the river. You can't deny it.
That's a good question, but I don't have the answer. Maybe Bob?
I just spoke with some engineers about that landfill. The reports come to the Board of Health about the landfill on a monthly basis. The fly ash that's the byproduct of burning the trash and the garbage at Seamass, ever since it began, goes to the Carver Marion Wareham landfill, which is a line landfill, and nothing gets into the environment. It is monitored by the DEP, discharge permit requirements for landfill.
Stop, stop in one, sir. What year?
I believe it's just like the process with the, with any project like that. The science at that time is the best they have, and I'm sure that they use that best science. And as it increases and they get better at what they do, then it is more and more strict. But the reports that I see, there's nothing going into the river from the fly ash from CMW.
From Seamass? So you haven't investigated that at all?
No, we don't have the resources to investigate that. I can read the reports. They're monitored by the EPA, the DEP, and we just have to take their word for it. And I believe there's no reason for them to misrepresent their information.
I believe there's no reason for them to misrepresent it. What year did they stop putting fly ash in? Do you know that? Because I know it was the '70s when that dump went in, right on that river. And the old dump in the '60s, which is Little Leaf Field, was on that river too, which is all through decomposing and creating nitrogen.
That's right. I can't speak for what happened in the past. I do not know the answer to that. I'm sure there's some pollution that got into the groundwater, and we know that on certain projects and superfund sites. And that's by virtue of what happened in the past is why we know how to treat it in the future. And I know that from the time that the information was available and they've done the best that they could to get everything out of the environment that's caused by the byproducts of what was produced at Seamass.
Okay, I'm looking out for the best of the town on you, but I'm seeing a lack of information for me to vote your way.
Tom Mickey, Little Harbor. I want to address the permit limit requirement for the nitrogen effluent limit. I think 12 ppm is a little too restrictive. Even the state in general, for most nitrogen removal systems, you know, use a 19 ppm standard. But I want to address the whole issue of the concentration of effluent coming out of the system. Because in some respects, it's counterintuitive. The amount of nitrogen load that comes out of the system with respect to the effluent that's coming out is a function of the total nitrogen load that's going into the system and the volume of water that goes in. So that nitrogen load mixes with the water. Some of the nitrogen dissolves in there, some is in suspension. But the total nitrogen is a function of the volume of water and the volume of solids and liquid nitrogen that go into the system.
The water breaks it down, though, correct?
That's what you're saying. That's what I'm saying. So the water dilutes, as it were, okay? With that in mind, recognize that if someone builds a new home, and they're conscientious about water use, and they put low-flow toilets in, and they put water restrictive nozzles in, and they're conscientious about not doing two or three loads of laundry a day, the total volume of clear water that they're putting into the system is very low. But the total amount of solids and urine that they're putting in the system doesn't change. That makes the level of nitrogen in the effluent extremely high.
I agree with you 100%. You need a lot of water to break it down.
So you need a lot of water in the system. And this is what I would tell anybody that put a nitrogen system in that was going to have it monitored the day before the guy comes to do the monitoring test. You turn the faucet on and you let it run all night long. Let me finish now. I'm joking, but I'm sincere about this. If you run clear water in the septic system, the level of nitrogen concentration in the effluent coming out will be less than 19, or perhaps even less than 12 parts per million. But really, what have you accomplished? You haven't really accomplished anything. In fact, what you're doing is punishing people who are conserving water. And the less water you put in the system, the less leaches into the groundwater. So we protect the groundwater resource by reducing the total amount of water that we put into the system. Okay? So we can fiddle with the numbers all we want, but if you set it at a concentration irrespective of the kinds of water loads that are going into the system, it really, in effect, is meaningless in terms of the concentration that's there. One other point that I just want to address. The previous speaker said that conventional Title V systems don't remove any nitrogen from the effluent. And in fact, I can assume that that particular individual has never, ever monitored a septic system and collected groundwater samples. I, in fact, have monitored probably 200 septic systems with very extensive surface and groundwater and unsaturated water samplers. And I can tell you that conventional Title V systems remove, in the water that's entering the groundwater, anywhere from 15% to 25% of the nitrogen. And if anybody has a septic system at home, you'll notice that the lawn above your septic system grows a heck of a lot more luxurious than it does in the rest of your yard. Why do you suppose that's happening? It's because the grass is taking the nitrogen, the nitrogen that's converted to ammonia, that's moving up the soil column and being absorbed by the plant roots and turning that lawn green. Well, if the septic system is not removing any nitrogen, why is that grass so luxurious? It's luxurious because the septic system is in fact removing it. The system itself, the biofilm that occurs on the absorption field removes anywhere from 15% to 25%, and the vegetation in the soil removes another 15% to 20%. So a conventional septic system will remove up to 40% of the total nitrogen load that goes into the system. And if anybody wants to refute me on that, I'll show you the research data that I've done and published to confirm that. Thank you very much.
It's Nazia Klaas again. John Riedel hit the nail on the head. It is true, before I became a builder, I was a lobster fisherman. We used to build tanks, and we used to monitor all the ammonia and the nitrogen pH. The best thing to remove nitrogen is trees, the roots and the grass, like he said. So when your septic or your Title V leaches, he's right. Trees grow nice, and the grass grow nice, so it's eating the nitrogen. And like Mr. Ed, like he said, he's saying all the waterways turning green. How did people live hundreds of years before us in Wareham with a septic here and a well 100 feet away? You know, everybody is, some of them 100 years old now. So apparently, it's not detrimental. And there's no studies showing that this, like the leaching after, goes Title V, after five feet of sand and stuff going to the water with full nitrogen, like so many parts per million. There's no facts of that. And going back to Falmouth, it is the only community has it, but only the houses, the multimillion-dollar homes right on the ocean. That's the only one has them. I know my cousin lives there, and he's in the Chamber of Commerce, and I ask him. And that's the only community through the whole state of Massachusetts. And if the federal government and the state wants us to be an experiment, they end up pocket and send every homeowner 30, 40 grand and monitoring for 30 years, fees, we all change. Right?
Today, at 9:00, I was in Falmouth at the Walkway Bay Center.
Hi, your name, sir?
Charlie Rowley. I'm five carver row. And the subject was nitrogen. We had speakers from Harvard, UMass Boston. One gentleman was from DEP and responsible for the total, what they call TMDLs, within the various regions of the state. And what came out of that particular seminar that I attended was, there's no simple answer to any of this. To put all of our X in one basket and assume that if we adopt a bylaw such as this, that we're going to solve the problem of nitrogen within the area of the town and satisfy whatever that loading may come out to be, because we don't even have anything other than a draft report from DEP. I was told today that we can anticipate seeing the final draft for that report until sometime, perhaps next year. So there are still things we don't know. But the one thing I did find out was that we don't know all the answers, that there are people that are working on this all the time, and it's something that we have to take very seriously if we really want to come up with an answer to our particular problem. And it's not the kind of an answer that you will get by simply throwing something at the wall and hope that something of that sticks. In particular, though, I'd like to address a couple of the things that I see in your proposed regulation, because although we've talked about a lot of things tonight, we haven't really talked about anything that's in your proposed regulation, which will impact every one of us in this room. So if I may, I'd just like to go back to Section 6.0, and then as a supplement to that, 6.3.1. And just, I have a couple of comments on that. I have comments on other things, but I'd like to address that first. 6.0 and then 6.3.1. If you look at the second paragraph in 6.0, it starts out by saying, "The Board of Health shall not approve a disposal system construction permit unless all of the requirements in this section have been satisfied." By that, I can infer, I think, that includes paragraph number one. Paragraph number one says, "The Board of Health shall hold at least one public hearing annually to review whether the effluent limitation..." And I'll wait on Bob here.
You said paragraph one?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of Section 6. It says that "The Board of Health shall hold at least one public hearing annually to review whether the effluent limitation in subsection 6.3.1 is protective of water quality." Well, 6.3.1 says that you shall have at least a rolling average of 12 milligrams per liter nitrogen for the year. So my question to the Board of Health is, because I think you've set yourself up for a lot of work. I would like to know what you're going to use for a benchmark to determine whether or not, if this regulation is implemented, whether it has been effective, and whether it is really doing the job of what the regulation is set out to do, which was to improve the coastal waters. I would suggest to you that we don't have any kind of benchmark. We have no background data, other than a report, which is in draft form from the state, which, to the best of my understanding, has data only up through maybe 200.
which, to the best of my understanding, has data only up through maybe 2008, 2009. I may be wrong. But it certainly is not up to date with respect to the areas of the town that have been sewed since that report was put together. If I am to be held to the requirements of this regulation, I think you folks are held to the requirements of this regulation as well, which means you've got a lot to do to make that determination on an annual basis, whether or not this is really working. If you make the determination that it is not working and you cut down the 12 milligrams per liter to 10, where's the justification? Or if you go the other way and say, "Well, we don't need 12, we'll go to 15," where's the justification for that? It seems to me that you've got a lot of homework to do. A lot of us have homework to do. We don't know all the answers, and I don't think that putting this together and simply implementing throughout the town without knowing what the implications are for various sections of town, because they're not all the same. Soils are not the same, groundwater depths are not the same, density of housing is not the same, uses are not the same. We need to know a little bit more about that. And that's one of the things that came out of that seminar today, that there's a lot of it that nobody really knows much about until you get into it. And there's a lot of detail that we need to find out. Has everyone been reading along and are there any questions specific to the document other than what you've heard so far? Anybody else got questions or thoughts, any input you'd like to share with the board?
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, you can, I'm sorry. For everybody here, you can go to the town's website at wareham dot ma dot US. Click on the Board of, go to Town Departments. Under the Board of Health, you can see where this draft regulation is linked and you can read it, copy it, print it out, mark it up, highlight it, do whatever you want. He's telling us Wareham Week also has a link, so if you'd rather go there to get the link, it's just the same document. Tom McGee, look at Lane, I want to follow up on the previous speaker. And I had a notation on my copy that said, in fact, how were you going to evaluate the performance of these systems? Do you have a strategy for watershed, Wareham watershed-wide monitoring to look at improvements in water quality? To assess whether these systems are improving the overall water quality of the estuaries and the waterways?
Well, I don't think the Board of Health does, but I thought the Buzzard Bay Coalition has something to do with checking that.
I think they'll only do that if we give them the money. Because they wanted, I know they wanted to do the Wee Weanican detail, but we didn't provide the, you know, several boards of selectmen wouldn't provide the money for them to do that. So they don't really have the financial resources to go to every town that asks them to come and sample. So I suspect that, and I'm not opposed to that, I mean, you know, if the taxpayers want to pay for monitoring of the watershed to look at those improvements. The other issue is, relates to staffing. I know everybody likes to beat up on municipal employees and say, you know, they just sit around the office doing nothing. But I know the Health Department and most of the other departments in the town work their butts off, you know, five, six days a week, you know, and much more than 40 hours a week. Where are they going to get the resources to do all the additional work that's going to be required for reviewing all of the monitoring data that's going to come in, making sure all the permitting process moves along smoothly? Are you going to require more staff to do that in the Board of Health?
Oh, I could probably answer that. Definitely you'd need more staff, and I'll give you the reason why. Even Kate over the bridge, the Health Departments can't handle it there either. They have asked Bonneville County to do their work for them on managing these alternatives and reporting them to the Bonneville County.
Do you have an idea of like dollar an estimate of what it would, I mean, what's the cost of the town?
Supposedly, there was a $50 price tag put in there that you would be paying, you know.
Yeah, that $50.
And it's going to go nowhere.
Well, if, no, I'm not even opposed to the $50. I guess my question is, is if you get, you know, 10 houses that meet the criteria that you're going to do, that's $500. That's not going to pay for an intern for a couple of weeks in the summertime. So how much money do you anticipate the Board of Health needing to, you know, fully implement this program with additional staffing and everything else?
Well, if this was, went into effect, depending on how many that actually would be going into the system, you know, you're talking probably one full-time person. If there's a number of, and right now, I wasn't going to mention this, but there's 30 to 40 out there right now that needs to be looked at. So, you know, why are we going here? I'd like to just say one thing, though, that was, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mike Block, your 15 access again. Now, I know that we laid off a lot of town people because the town of Wareham couldn't afford those particular people to be on their books. So now you're going to be requiring more people to monitor our septic system, you couldn't even afford to hold on to the people that we had. We had to lay them off, give them early retirements, try to jam them on their retirements and everything, just so you could get out from underneath them fiscally. Now, we're going to be adding the system in, you're going to be needing people to monitor it, and you already can't afford what you have. How is that going to work? And how high is my property tax is going to become when you do make that happen?
Well, you know, not to say, but it won't be the Board of Health monitor. We would be getting reports from the people that do the maintenance on there. That's what that would come from. At the beginning, I don't believe they add anybody to the, right away.
Yes, Howard Smith, District 4. If we could just back up just a little bit, well, 6.3.4, reporting requirements. Basically, throughout this regulation, we're talking about inspecting. That means someone has to go in, take samples, inspect the system and so forth. One of my questions is, does this person has to be licensed? Who's going to qualify this person? And how are they going to go about this? Plain and simple. We got to start someplace.
You want me to answer?
Yes, please.
I had one part, change this, and I wanted the person that does this to be licensed by the DEP, to have his waste treatment plant operational license. That's not in there. I think it should be in there. Right now, they don't have, this doesn't have anybody that basically says they have to be licensed or correct. That portion needs to be changed, if it goes out.
Change, I think we should be inserted in there. I mean, we're kind of putting a cat before the horse here, I believe.
I agree with you.
And I know in my business, and I've been in business almost 40 years, so I've seen quite a few septic systems, believe me. And, I mean, part of it is, it's all well and good, but I mean, I know of three of these alternative septic systems in town that were put in. The people don't know anything about an inspection process. They don't know anything about monitoring. They've called me up and asked me questions, and I have limited knowledge. And I'll be honest, a number of years ago, I stood up a couple of times on town meeting floor and spoke in opposition to their bylaw. And I sat back one day and I said, "You know, in all fairness, I need to find out more than what I'm just hearing from individuals." So I took the time, I took an eight-hour day, I spent $275 out of my own pocket to go down to the University of Rhode Island and take a course on alternative and innovative septic systems. And at 2:30 in the afternoon, one of the instructors asked me what I thought about the class. I said, "Well, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I think it was absolutely fascinating. It's the only time I've ever taken a class and not fallen asleep by 8:30." Because I used to sleep right up in that chair at 9 o'clock in the morning in study hall. But, I mean, tell you, what these guys had to say was phenomenal. They were invited to come to Wareham at one time. That was declined. This group of individuals, three of them, they do inspections, assist in planning, designing, inspecting alternative septic systems in Rhode Island, Connecticut, Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. Did you notice I left out something? They inspect, they do work, this type of work in Michigan along the coastline, similar to Wareham. They do work on the east and west coast of Florida, sandy soil, very similar. They do work on the east coast of Texas, on the waterfront. They do work on the west coast of California. To me, I think they had a little expertise. They were denied the opportunity to come into Wareham and speak to a group of individuals. Thank you.
My name's Danny McNeil, I live up in White Island. I had a couple of questions. Does anyone know what percentage the town of Buzzards Bay contributes to this wastewater problem? In other words, how much of their effluent do we treat? And are they going to be part of this program? And also, has there ever been any studies done to show what percentage of the nitrogen that's in the water and the runoff and in the groundwater does come from cranberry bogs and lawn treatment and garden applications that use a lot of nitrogen? Because that all comes into the big picture.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I can answer the first question. First of all, Buzzards Bay doesn't, their municipal sewerage that they send to our treatment facility has a contract with Wareham for up to 17% of the capacity. The capacity of the treatment plant is, I believe, the permit allows up to 1.56 million gallons per day effluent into the river. We're not quite at that permit limit. I believe last I heard, there's the availability of maybe 150, 160,000 gallons a day. So we're pretty close to maxed, which raises the issue of extending municipal sewer to the rest of Wareham. That treatment facility will not probably handle a whole lot more. The town of Wareham would be faced with a couple of things. New development would likely have to entertain onsite waste treatment systems, which is costly. Or the town of Wareham would have to entertain a new wastewater treatment facility, more likely in the other river. The Wareham River will not handle anymore, according to DEP. And so the likelihood of extending sewer, while that makes the most sense, is going to take the most nitrogen out of the environment. We're near capacity, at least for that facility, and according to DEP standards, that the river will handle. So there's the dilemma that runs with extending municipal sewer to the rest of the community. So keep that in mind as things like this progress. But also understand, this is a draft. And while I think even the members of the Board of Health would argue that it needs work, and with the input that you've all shared with us tonight, I believe the Board of Health is going to go back to the drawing board and work at that. Sure.
You didn't answer the thing on the cranberry bog.
Well, I said I could only answer the first question. That was the...
I'm not on that first question.
Okay.
You say about 17% of Buzzards Bay wastewater water comes to Wareham.
I don't believe they meet, I don't believe they meet that limit. I know that the contract they have allows up to 17%. I think they're probably moving maybe 12% or something like that.
Let's say it's 10%.
Okay, whatever.
What's the possible million of their effluent?
Well, it's still being treated.
In other words, the nitrogen level is still higher for them than it is for us.
Right, but it's being treated at the plant, that's the idea. Follow me?
But why don't they have to come under this system so that whatever they send to the Wareham treatment plant comes under the 12%?
Well, this regulation, this regulation is for wastewater systems in the ground. This isn't for municipal sewer. Follow me?
Excuse me, Bob. If you want to come up...
From Buzzards Bay.
That's fine, having a conversation, I have no problem. But having come up...
Okay, sorry.
But it's still contributing to the runoff.
Well, it's contributing to the volume, it's having to get treated, there's a cost. They pay the town. They do have a contract that pays the town that goes to the wastewater treatment budget for helping to offset costs. They do do that. And I believe they pay up to 17% of costs.
Excuse me, Bob. I have a quick question from Mr. Howard Smith. Is this expert group, you were at this meeting, this course, why were they denied to come to Wareham? If we have such an expert group that has information for us, why aren't we listening to them? No, well, no.
Basically, the offer was offered, I'll leave it. You know, I don't really go in, to go in a lot of it publicly. It was offered, they were denied by a certain group.
So, okay. So you have information of who this group is?
Yes, ma'am.
And so maybe it's sensitive to look at this.
Yes, these were three instructors at the University of Rhode Island who literally do this constantly and have done it for years. They have years and years of expertise. They offered to come to Wareham one day and give a portion of their time for nothing.
Sounds like a great idea.
And I don't know if they do it now, if they're all kind of shot down.
Now, you didn't tell us your complete opinion of the overall nitrogen system that they were giving you training on. Was it a good system or was it a defunct, not quite what you would want to have in Wareham? I know they were pretty knowledgeable, they knew what they were doing, they're working all around the New England states, with the exception of Massachusetts, which you've made clear. Now, is your opinion of their overall, what they trained you, does that, do you see...
I'm going to let it go, but from now on, shoot the question this way, please.
No, I'm sorry.
But that's all right, go ahead, I don't want to...
Okay. It's just a question I had that he, that would have brought light. And the other thing is, the fine is pretty steep. For that Section 7 fine, $300 a day? Per offense? I think it's seven, isn't it? No, it's not, nine, right there. It's, "The Board of Health agent shall be responsible for enforcing this regulation. Violations of this regulation may result in fines up to $300 per offense each day or a portion thereof during which a violation continues shall constitute a separated offense, and each section of this regulation violated shall constitute a separate offense." So if you have, in the language of that, if you have a system that's defunct and you can't quite afford to get it done in a timely manner, you're going to take a real beating in fines.
I don't think that would ever happen, but...
So we are going to delete Section 9, is what you're saying.
I believe, sir, through the chairman, that that was put into the regulation because, believe it or not, there's some people who don't comply with regulations. That is somewhere along the lines with the state sanitary code, which you would be charged $500 a day for violation of the code. It doesn't usually happen, but in some cases, for violators who don't comply, that is needed. So that's in there only for that reason.
They can't afford it.
What happens if you just plain can't afford to service that kind of system?
There is a way for it, says May.
May, yeah, that's what I was going to say. The key word is May, not shall.
Right.
We, the Board of Health will be responsible for enforcing the regulation, but the Board of Health also has the latitude to not assess a fine. I mean, there are circumstances, clearly. Maybe it's a system that, while making promise to meet a standard, won't make the standard. And so therefore...
I can say one thing, I've worked for town for 14 years. That's in every, that's in every place. Any place you look, I don't care if you're running down the wrong way of the street, they put $300 in there, and I've never seen it happen. You might laugh about it, but I've never seen it happen. And I don't think you're going to see it happen here, not with this board, and I can almost guarantee that.
I have a funny case in point. I worked for a company, which I'm going to leave them blank because I don't think they want me airing out their dirty laundry. They had a gas system installed that was passed for a long time, inspected and passed by the town of Plymouth. Then one day, an inspector came in, said, "You are in violation, your system's been in violation for I don't know how many decades," and they fined him 100, they fined him up to 150,000 plus over their fuel system. and they fined him a hundred, they fined him up to 150,000 plus over their fuel system. They had passed inspections, and everything on the system was compliant up to that one day.
I can't say what happened somewhere else, but I know things like that don't happen, because I happen to be an enforcement agent somewhere else. It just doesn't happen.
It did happen.
I know, well, I can bet you any amount of money they didn't pay the 150, I can tell you that right. They could take him to court, and he would stay in the courts for 10 years, believe me, I know that for a fact. Go ahead.
Tom McNeil, a little alright. I hate to be monopolizing this, but I guess I have tons of questions. I want to reference something that Bob said a few minutes ago about a new sewerage treatment plan. Previous Board of Selectmen were quite vocal, at least three members of the Board of Selectmen, outright at town meetings, said they would never, ever vote for another sewerage treatment plan. Fortunately, we now have, according to a couple of town meetings ago, the proposal that we're eventually going to have sewerage commissioners, who are actually going to be able to do this, you know, job on a regular basis, and will be committed to that. And I think, if we look at future growth in the town, given the limitations that we have on the existing capacity in the sewerage system, and I agree with Bob, it's about 150,000 gallons, which really, a day, when you think about it, is nothing. The town of Wareham is destined for another sewerage treatment plan at some point in the future. I think that's a given. You know, it may be five years down the road, 10 years down the road, sometime down the road, we're getting another sewerage treatment plan. Let's say, for example, it's five years down the road. What are we going to do for the person who puts in a $35,000 system and then spends a couple of thousand dollars a year monitoring it? Two years after the system goes in, gets told that he is now going to have his neighborhood sewored, and he's required to hook to the system and pay a betterment of 15,000 or 20,000 or 30,000 dollars. What relief, financial relief, is he going to get from the Board of Health to offset the betterment that he's now obliged to pay to the town after he's spent this money?
Well, I'd like to ask a question back to you. What are they doing right now when they put a new septic in, and sewer line runs down?
They don't. And those people scream bloody murder, and I think if it were you or I, we would do the same thing. But the difference is, is if they're putting a conventional Title V and it's...
A lot less money.
It's a half or a third of the money that it would be if you're putting one of these systems in, so...
You don't have it.
And I guess the further point that I want to make is, is that it's been a slow, laborious process to get these sewer commissioners elected, even to get a ballot so that we can elect them. And I would like to think that perhaps maybe this whole process could be at least temporarily put on hold until we seat some sewer commissioners, and they can meet with the Health Department, and you guys can bump horns and decide what it is that the town is going to do in the future. And perhaps, if they're progressive enough and they think that maybe we do need a sewerage treatment plan, maybe a lot of the problems that we have with nitrogen in the waterways will be resolved with another sewerage treatment plan. And it will be a costly endeavor, but if the people in this town are concerned about water quality, it would seem like, and as Bob has alluded to before, if you want to remove nitrogen from wastewater, the cheapest way to do it, the most cost-effective way on a profound basis of nitrogen, is to do it with a sewerage treatment plan, not with a $40,000 nitrogen removal septic system.
If I can, I'll let you go back to the regulations again. Since this is a public hearing, and it may be the only time when we have an opportunity, I think these questions need to be asked. If we could, I'd like to refer to section 6.1 for a moment. I won't belabor with a lot of other stuff, but at least, this has me a little baffled. Excuse me. Whenever an applicant, contractor, engineer, homeowner, whoever decides to put in a septic system today, they fill out what they call a disposal works construction permit, submit the permit along with the requisite fee, along with the plan, which has been designed and stamped by a registered professional engineer or a sanitarian. It gets submitted to the Board of Health, and if there are no variances that are needed, any waivers from Title V, or the additional regulations that are in effect by the Board of Health today, they can have that plan reviewed by the health agent, and within a few days, come back with a permit. And once the actual disposal works fee is paid, then they pick up the permit, and they hire the contractor, and they go to work. This particular regulation says that all applications submitted to the Board of Health which shall hold a public hearing within 30 days. So my question to the Board of Health is, why, if the regulation requires that the alternative system, first of all, be approved by DEP, have all kinds of warranties, guarantees of construction, guarantees through maintenance agreements on all of this, if all of that is a part of what needs to be in place, why are we holding up an applicant for 30 days to have a public hearing before the Board of Health? Why is it not just as simple as it is today?
I don't have an answer for that.
Well, I guess my request would be that you looked into it and let us know why.
I do want to read one thing, though, with one of the past speakers. This, when I said the cost of the nitrix, this was sent to the Board of Health from Peter Lombardi, who is actually the builder of the nitrix system. And again, I'm just going to say what he said. The total cost, including all materials, engineering, oversight of construction, and startup, and allowance for a typical installation, is $24,000. Now, down below, he says, "The capital costs do not include the septic tank or drain field in some typical installation." So what I'm saying again is, that's 24,000 plus 8,000 to 10,000 for the system. So he's still looking at 35,000 plus the maintenance cost. And that came from the gentleman that supplies the system.
Nazir Al Qlasa again, thank you. One last thought. I just want to let a lot of people who here doesn't know the Board of Health, this is the great Board of Health, I've worked in a lot of towns, very helpful. Lot of people jumping on their throats, they, they're just kind of the messengers, they haven't adopted their, this regulations, yeah, but if they adopt it, they have to follow the rules. But anyway, they're great guys, they're very helpful, and I know a lot of people jump on them, but it's not, this is not much, like, I mean, they're doing, maybe. But anyway, last, the last thing I would like to tell you guys, I think the town of Wareham should probably listen to these gentlemen, the guy I said from the college, from Rhode Island, University of Rhode Island, maybe sit down, talk to them. We should see probably these things implemented in 20, 30 communities before we touch it. This is very costly. We should let, see it in other towns, see how it works. Wareham is a town, people can't afford it here, simply can't afford it. People can't afford, I know people in Oakdale, I know a 100-year-old lady. Her granddaughter works in the town of Wareham, and she just put a septic, and she, now, she never left to pay for the sewer. You know, she's probably not complaining, the poor thing, anyway, but still, she just put a new septic, spent a lot of money, and it's a Title V, and it's, and she's 100. Imagine if she had to put a $40,000 system, which probably no results. We probably don't even know what's the results, it's all speculations, speculations. There's no concrete answers. So let's see it happen somewhere else before we jump and we become the guinea pig, like you said, and we detrial, the trial town. We don't want to be trial, we can't afford it, people in Wareham can't afford it, simple. So go to town and vote it down, tell your family, friends, go to town meeting, April 23rd, and vote this article down for your sake and your family's sake. Thank you, and have a good night.
Okay, I don't know if anybody else has anything, I'm gonna close the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
John Browning, Precinct 3. I think we've heard a lot of good things that have to be done about this. It needs a lot of tweaking, it may take some time, but I hate that you people leave with the impression that there is no problem here. I personally test the water here, over 12 years now, and the water is deteriorating. And I don't even need to test it, because I can go out, wait out, and I can see it. There are no scallops there anymore, and no eel grass. The water is getting greener in the summer, so we have a problem. This, this may not be the answer yet, but we've got to do something about it. And I think even the people who have criticized us agree we have to do something. So, get working on it, and let's do something. We have a problem.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else got a question? Anyone else like to offer any input? I hope that you've at least come away with your eyes opened to the fact that there's no simple solution. As, as John just points out, it can't be ignored. As Charlie points out, we need benchmarks. We probably need to do more of our own testing. We need to identify specifically. We need to identify what sort of loads are coming into our community from communities above us, like Plymouth, and Carver, and Marion, and Rochester. There are a lot of things that need to go into this assessment, so... Wareham is, though, not doing nothing. So, understand that. Wareham is leaps and bounds ahead of probably most communities on Buzzards Bay. And I would encourage you to stay tuned for everything. You can always attend Board of Health meetings, you can see our minutes online, and you can always email the health agent, the health office, if you've got ideas about things that you think can contribute. Of course, our eyes and ears are open, so... We have, we have the hall until 9 o'clock, if anybody wishes to stay. You got one more question?
Is this coming up at town meetings? Is this something, I mean, after tonight?
Well, can I, you want to answer that?
Go ahead, Bob. No, I can answer it. No, this is not, but there is a regulation put in by, I guess, the selectmen, or whoever. There is an article in there that basically says the same thing as this does at town meetings.
If I may, if I might add to that, this is important for you to know. This is a draft regulation, and that is what it is, a regulation that is governed by the Board, the Board of Health and the health agent. There's a proposed article for town meetings warrant, which, as you heard earlier tonight, is similar to this language. That effort has come before the town before. It has been repealed, and it really doesn't belong in the town's bylaws, at least as far as I'm concerned, and I'm just a citizen like you are. This is an issue that should be governed by and regulated by the Board of Health. I would encourage you to vote down that article, that would just be my advice. You all can do what you want. I would encourage you to vote that article down, let the Board of Health continue to do the work, and, and let's, let's get the benchmarks suggested to identify that this entire town is not needing of the same language and the same regulation. Some places are right on the ocean, some places are miles from the ocean. Those should have different considerations. Some, some places are on freshwater, they might need different considerations. There are all those ingredients that go into wastewater. So, as you heard here tonight, there are a lot of people that have a lot of thoughts and ideas about it, and, you know, we welcome them. One more?
I think before we try another proposal like this, we should be, have at least a complete environmental impact reports on the whole area of Wareham and the effect of sewage. We should have at least a proper cost report from three different vendors, not just one. I think we should have a cost report over the stage of 20, 30 years, so people know what they're getting into. And I think we should definitely meet, at least have a meeting with people who know these systems far better than we do in this room. And I think before another proposal like this ever comes before us, we should have those steps taken, so that we're not blind.
Just a matter, I don't mean to stop you, but we've had three different people come in front of the Board of Health and give us costs in the past. We have had, we've asked them in the last three or four months, pretty much similar to the cost that I gave.
Do, and you don't, you have any reports of anything that you could produce for us that would show what each three vendors proposed, what they've proposed, how they...
Well, I read you the one with the nitrix. The antidote was in front of us, too. And basically, they're all pretty much the same cost, you know? I don't have the other costs with me, but I certainly can produce it.
Now, what about their overall maintenance on each...
About the same thing, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, this is a gentleman here from Fast System, also has...
Yeah, I just, if I could, I'm from the technology, I represent technology, and he's... Yeah, why don't you come on down?
Before, before he speaks, this gal was in line.
Carol Mazzarelli, Precinct 2. We have to get those three guys here. I'm sorry, to speak to...
We have to get what?
The three gentlemen that Smitty said.
Oh.
Give us options. Yes, we need nitrogen, yes, there is an issue, but is this, is this, is this them solve it? I don't think so. We need more options, and we need more people to go down that are, that know about systems, that can say, "This is what you can do." I'm 71 years old, I cannot afford $40,000. I can't. I can't do it. Who can? No one can. Get the gentlemen down here, please, give us some options.
We have some of, some of the costs for some of the various systems have been looked at the Board of Health, and I'm sort of new to the Board of Health, so I don't, haven't been there a long time, but I've been at some of the last months, and many of the various systems have come up in my recollection, and I have some of the numbers here, was the nitrix was the most expensive. Most of them were much cheaper than nitrix, but I'm not going to read them all, but there, some of the information has already been looked at, and we do have, we do have some of the information.
Maybe we could have it available on the website for people to view.
My name is Mike Merle. I live in a couple towns over, I live in Mattapoiset. I work for a company, J&amp;R Sales and Service, and they have been involved with the onsite industry for about 15 years. Fast System, you may have heard of in the past, is, is there, is the technology they represent here in Massachusetts and in New England. Recently, a technology they developed, which is, it's a membrane technology, and it's the same treatment technology that is used at Gillette Stadium, very effective in treating wastewater. This company has developed this product, that's been able to get down to very low levels of nitrogen. That is why I am here tonight, we were invited to speak a couple of times on this. I'm a resident of a community, I'm a taxpayer in a community, I've been faced with the same types of issues, so I, I, you know, I have, I feel your pain. I'm not here to push an issue. When the time is right, this technology is going to be available. This technology does work. I'm excited about this technology. When it is implemented, I know from my, from my personal experience, about 15 years of working with membrane bioreactors, and this particular system, working with it for about two years, very effective. So...
Fast a question, is that the tubular system with the...
No, this is a membrane, it's a tubular system, which looks like spaghetti strands.
Right.
That, that is what is up at Gillette Stadium, and that is one type of membrane that needs regular maintenance. This is a plate system that doesn't need regular maintenance, it would be cording. But I just want to qualify, I see a few people shaking their head, not understanding exactly what I'm talking about, but I want to qualify who I am and where I come from. Couple of quick questions that I can answer for you that I've heard tonight, the two gentlemen that you're primarily talking about from the University of Rhode Island, Dave Callen and George Loomis. And if you called them tomorrow and asked them to come speak here, and educate you all on this, they'd be more than happy to do so. They're very, very, you know, adept with, with all these issues, all the different technologies that are out there. They are environmental scientists, they're soil scientists, they're, they have an understanding of, between them, they've probably about 60 years of experience within the onsite industry. They do everything from the Caribbean all the way up to Rhode Island. They do do some work in Massachusetts, although it has presented some challenges. But they, they, you can go right on the URI website and contact them directly, any one of you, I encourage you to do so. But the reason I put my... But the reason I put my hand up in the back of the room is because I, I just, you know, we talked tonight about, uh, the cost of the systems. And my, one of my competitors, F R Mahoney, uh, who has the amphidome system, which has been along for, around for a long time, it was just mentioned that his system is comparable in cost to that of the nitrex system. That is not true. From what I have been told by representatives from that company, that's, that system costs up and above the Title V costs, okay? The Title V system. Uh, it's one-third of the cost of the nitrex system. It's a, it's a between seven and eight thousand dollars. Incidentally, my system is around seven or eight thousand dollars. Complete package that goes into the existing tank, it's put in with a leaching field. This does not include if you have to pump up to your leaching field. That would be an additional cost. But with both his technology and my technology, um, you can get out of the leaching field by gravity, a pump is not required. One question that I would encourage you to ask, and I didn't hear it being asked tonight, you talked about the nitrex system, it being twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. The nitrex system, as it stands by itself, is a, uh, a denitification system. It is not a nitrification system. It will need to be preceded by another technology. So when you talk about operation costs for the nitrex system, you have two systems that are going to be involved with this. You have a system that precedes the nitrox and a system that follow, in, in the nitrox itself. So when we hear about a six hundred dollar monitoring cost, I don't know how they can monitor a system for six hundred dollars. The true numbers are probably going to be ongoing for a system like this with quarterly maintenance, twelve milligrams per liter nitrogen, you're probably looking at fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars ongoing. Once these systems have been qualified over time, you will see a reduction. So, but that, that's going to be, that's going to be the average. So that, that is a key question to ask the board or anybody else about what is going to precede the nitrex system. But I can tell you that my, my technology, the competitor's technology, both technologies at work, I encourage you to call Mossburg County, Dr. George Hoyfelder, who runs a test center, look at the data. Uh, there was a certification process, NSF, both systems have gone through NSF approval. Um, very stringent testing, um, that, that is behind it, there's, there's plenty of documentation on this. Uh, with respect to the membrane system, there are seven hundred and fifty thousand membrane systems out there in, in, in the world today, not of this technology, but various technologies. They work very, very effectively. There was another question about, uh, operators. Unless we're talking about below ten milligrams per liter, you put an IA technology in, you are going to be required to have a Massachusetts certified operator to monitor the system. If it's below ten milligrams per liter, you can circumvent the groundwater discharge process. And that's a whole different ballgame. We're not talking about that ballgame. We're talking about above ten. So it will be a certified operator, uh, in most cases a grade-two operator, uh, for residential homes certainly. Joe homeowner can go take that test and monitor their own system, believe it or not. So I don't want to talk myself out of the job because we also monitor systems. But I want, I want to represent it, I want to, you know, represent these technologies, the interest of these technologies, um, fairly, you know, I want to, I want to throw out all the information there. Um, it's, you know, I'm, I'm also the president of the Massachusetts Water Pollution Control Association here in Massachusetts. We have worked very effectively in trying to implement changes to the regulations so people can go out and get certified for, uh, to be able to license these treatment plans. You can go down to an H and R block facility, and there's about a half a dozen of them within an hour's distance from here, and you can get certified to operate these systems. Now, there's also a regulation that the technology manufacturer must train you as well. The DEP has a regulation that requires these technology manufacturers to train all the individuals, you, you just have to meet the criteria of your certified operator.
Take a couple of questions, uh, okay? I guess there's one more.
Are you talking about this or are you trying to sell us something?
I'm not trying to sell you anything. I'm not trying to sell, hopefully I'm trying to answer you some questions. If you folks define that you have a need for, and you're going to go with this, then I'd like to be on the forefront.
Then you're trying to sell us something?
Yeah. But, you know, in my best, you know, I think I'd be very, very honest with you folks here tonight.
Can I ask you a question? Regarding, so many people would face in this town, issues of old systems which are contributing to the nitro load going into the bay. There is that issue of cost of going through a Title V and then going the additional step to deal with the nitro. Now, what I understand is that these membrane systems, from discussions with neighbors of mine and neighboring town, that there are tubular membrane systems that aren't that expensive, that are fairly effective.
Can everybody hear him?
And so I'm just wondering is, what is that range from where you know and being in the business to the nitrox system going up? What is the range generally in addition to the cost of, say, doing a Title V?
What, I mean, there are a couple of membrane systems that are out there right now.
Just assume it's all gravity and you're doing a remake of a system, you're putting in a new Title V system, you're going to add the nitro package with a membrane system on top of that.
Just, just the membrane.
Right.
Just the membrane. Seven, eight thousand dollars.
That's right, sir.
That's it.
What about maintenance?
Not much.
Fourteen hundred bucks. First year, first year, in full disclosure, first year is going to be a little bit more expensive with my system, not with the, well, not with the, uh, the amphidome. It's a little less and it's because of the permitting that was up there before, the four levels of permitting. After the first year.
Okay, look, wait a minute, I, I let it go too far, you know, you, you should have got up and.
I'm sorry.
To speak, but that's fine. Thank you for, for what you've said, all right? Uh, you know, I just want to mention one thing. You know, uh, in the past and before I even got here, we have brought people in front of us, myself too, scientists, uh, people from the DEP, uh, Brian Dudley, three times. We have listened to all these people. This is nothing new, what's going on right now. We know what's going on out there. We know what these systems cost. We know, yeah, maybe seven or eight thousand, but there's always added cost to it. That's not the point. The point is, are we going to make this regulation? Is it the right thing to do in Wareham? That's, that's the thing. And from listening to some of what I, what I'm hearing, to me, it doesn't sound like the right thing, but that's what I'm hearing right now. Excuse me one second, I'm going to go about ten more minutes and then we're going to go.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to speak to you. Quick, quick one. Sure, technology is nice and all these things nice. And sure driving a hybrid car is nice, but the problem is people can't afford it. We're, we're missing the point. We all know that they drive a hybrid car for fifty grand, but they can't buy a hybrid car. You know, so this is the thing, we, we all know it's a good thing, but we can't afford it. This is quite the problem.
That is the problem.
And that is a problem.
I know, I know two speakers right now, John and then Mark wants to speak. Does anyone else?
Thank you. John Churchill, for the record, I'm a local engineer. I do a lot of designs throughout Cape Cod, the islands, a lot of designs in, in Wayangham and, and Southeast of Mass. So, um, this regulation will affect, uh, pretty much everybody in this room. And it affects me, uh, when a customer comes to the door and I have to break the news to them about what Wareham has implemented as regulations, uh, as such as these. And a couple of things, and I've heard a lot of, a lot of great speakers, um, and I'm going to hit those points real quick, but I'd like to know, are you planning on closing the public hearing this evening? Is, is this going to be carried on to another?
This is it, no more public hearings.
So you're going to close the public hearing after tonight's?
That's correct.
Oh, you are? Okay. Because I just want to note, I believe there's a three-member board. And I know one of the three members missed a lot of good information.
Well, I'll let him know later.
You're gonna, okay. I just hope the, the minutes get reviewed because just so the audience knows, as the article's going to be on Monday night and through town meeting, this is the Board of Health's regulation. It's a three-member board, two out of three votes, this becomes regulation potentially tomorrow, okay? So they could take that action. Not saying they will, it sounds like they're actually listening to the audience and they're doing a great job. However, what authorizes them to make regulations is Mass General Law 131, um, section, uh, 111, section thirty-one. The first statement is, Board of Health may make reasonable health regulations. That's the Mass General Law. To me, this is very unreasonable, okay? Secondly, uh, I heard the comment from, um, I believe it was D, in, uh, DEP, I believe, uh, not Brett Rowe, it was, uh, who, Brian Dudley, I think Brian Dudley. Brian Dudley's terminology was very aggressive, okay? Twelve is very aggressive. That comes back to, no other community, three hundred and fifty-one, has a regulation in their town, Board of Health, such as this. No other one. And we want to bring this to Wareham? The economic times are too, um, too, too, uh, complicated here, especially in Wareham, to, to pass this on. It's not the landowner, I'm a land advocate, I'm a homeowner advocate, I'm a property owner advocate. And when you put this cost, this cost goes to the end user. You look at the land costs, you look at the home costs, you want to buy a home in Wareham, what's going to happen is that's the person that's going to pay. They're not going to want to buy a home in Wareham. Who would want to buy a home? We're going to have a reputation that's basically, uh, you have these regulations and they don't quite know all these regulations, they don't quite know what we do as engineers, they just know they're going to have to spend a lot of money, they have to spend a lot of money in operation and maintenance, and they're going to have this, this special system in their front lawn and they had to pay more money for the house because of it. That's what they're going to know. And why would they want to move to Wareham? So I, I say that, and then, uh, in this paragraph as well, it says, prior to the adoption of any such regulation or amendment which exceeds the minimum requirements of the subsurface disposal sanitary sewage, which is Title V, the state minimum standards, uh, provided by the state of Mymattico, a Board of Health shall state at said public hearing, local conditions which exist or reasons for exceeding such minimum requirements of the state Title V. Mr. Brady was correct, they did create a hundred and fifty-foot setback that, from wetlands. The state minimum standard is fifty. They're not, they are not not doing something, they are doing things. They're, they're creating a regulation to exceed, to go increase it to a hundred. Conservation Commission in the town of Wareham, you cannot build a home if you're within a hundred feet with a septic system to a wetland. So that's been in place for many, many years and, and, um, that was done, I think, at least ten or fifteen years ago. So homeowners or lots became unbuildable when that was created. They've increased zoning up in the Shangri-La area, Chashquan area, to R-130, three-acre zoning, sixty thousand square feet. That was done because of nitrogen. That was done in nineteen seventy-three in a study done again, I believe in the eighties for Bottom Oak Bay watershed. So all of these regulations and all this over, over regulations, if you will, are, are, are piling up. And, uh, I think there was something very interesting that was said, um, I believe, Mr. Big, the geologist said it, and it was great. I read an article as well. There is denitrification that does occur in a Title V septic system. To say that it does not is totally incorrect. A Title V system does remove some nitrogen. And I'll try to recap. Baseline information, absolutely, how can you have a public health concern or environmental concern unless you know the TMDL? If you do not know the TMDL or the baseline, as Mr. Rollins said, if you do not know where the starting point is, how can you know if this regulation actually achieved its goal? There is no other, there is no other, uh, I think there was a comment here, we have four cranberry growers, we have lawn fertilizers, you have, um, septic systems, you have stormwater, all contribute to the nitrogen problem, okay? There's not a less economical, um, beneficial, um, regulation throughout the town or wherever that can create a better, um, better reduction in the nitrogen. And what is the nitrogen? What are we trying to achieve? All we're doing is we're limiting a, a property owner on their nitrogen. We don't even know what the TMDL is. And the TMDL draft study that was talked about, that's only the Wareham and the Aguan River watershed. That's the only, so when we, even when we get that study, we're still not going to know about the other four watersheds. That's just one watershed. So we've got to be careful there. Again, someone comes to my office, I heard the Fast Technology. Nitrex is the only system, if you go online, that meets less than, it's a, less than twelve. Put it that way. You have plenty of other alternative technologies. Their, their technology is new. Gentleman was a hundred percent correct, eight thousand dollars. For his technology, you got to buy a tank, you got to put a leaching field in. Those are the systems. So now you're talking eighteen thousand dollars, you're not talking eight thousand dollars. Don't be misled. However, the permit that would be needed is a piloting permit. How many permits are allowed under a piloting permit? Fifteen. I can design fifteen systems using that technology. Now where do I go? I go to the nitrox. So, or I guess amphidome maybe, I don't know yet about the amphidome. Testing requirement, every system requires an annual testing contract, ma, operation maintenance, every system, no matter what system you have. Piloting approval system, monthly. Who pays for that? The homeowner. So the fifteen permits, I'm going to pass this on to you as the homeowner, and I'm going to say, here you go, I can design fifteen. The permitting requirement under piloting approval from Mass DEP for that system is, is, um, monthly. And I believe it's for the first eighteen months.
Three months, four to eight months.
First eight months, okay, first eight months. So I, I mean, I shouldn't be the one telling the audiences, but first eight months, which I think that's a little excessive, first of all, for us to be paying for the piloting, which is about four hundred dollars a whack, I think two fifty was stated, it's about four hundred dollars for, especially when you're testing affluent nitrogen, effluent nitrogen. So that, that, that gets sent. Also, these manufacturers came through the Board of Health. One of, one of the questions was made, well, what happens if you do not meet the twelve? What the answer? Homeowner's responsibility. That's not homeowner's responsibility, that's the homeowner, that's the engineer, that's the installer. So we're going to be the ones on the hook because we designed this system that didn't meet the twelve because they decided to turn it off, um, you know, two weeks before they decided to do the, you know, the testing. They're going to come looking for us, Board of Health's going to be finding them. Um, I, I, I'm not a true believer in this regulation, the way it's currently written. I believe that there's other things, whether it be septic systems, whether it be lawn fertilizers, whether it be stormwater, because stormwater is going to be a big issue in the next five years. And the town of Wareham has residents and taxpayers like we all are, we're going to be paying for that in our taxes. That's an EPA requirement and that is going to be required by us. So it's a nitrification, it's a denitrification, a, a, a regulation that requires removal of nitrogen, and I believe Buzzards Bay Coalition will agree with me, that that's going to be coming down the pike as well. So we need to look at this as a town-wide problem and we need to identify how to reduce nitrogen with the least economical expense to every taxpayer we meet.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mark, Mark, before you, um, and before you, this gentleman, I didn't see him, was sitting up front, sorry.
Brian Aboyl, uh, District Two. We've heard that Title V originally was, it was the greatest thing since sliced bread and now, uh, it's not quite so good. This system seems like a monster that could grow out of control. The proper way to take the nitrogen out is to expand the sewerage, build a new plant and that's, long range, that's what we should be doing. This, this is a stopgap measure at best. It's, it will wreck home sales. Like they follow, like John said, nobody will want to come into Wareham and buy a house if they're going to be looking at, uh, forty-five thousand dollars to, uh, meet their septic requirements and nitrogen requirements. So I say we should vote it down and we should really look at expanding the sewer system which is the proper way to do it. It's done forever.
Thank you. Mark, Mark Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mark Rasmussen, I'm with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. We've been, uh, working with the Board of Health now for a couple of years, trying to provide information to the board. I want to congratulate the board on Bob's been, it's pretty sick of the word nitrogen, working on this nitrogen question for a long time, trying to get information and figure out what a good regulation could be. I want to comment just on a couple of things that were said tonight. A couple, I think a really good discussion, uh, we've been basically sitting, listening, trying to figure out how can this regulation move forward in a, in a reasonable, rational way in town? And I want to go back to where John Browning meant, was at about fifteen minutes ago. So for the past twenty years, we've been collecting water quality data in every harbor and cove all around Buzzards Bay. For eighteen of those twenty, I've been the one collecting the water quality samples in the Wareham River. I literally am the person that collects the bottles, brings them to the lab and collects the data here in Wareham. The reason the nitrogen issue is so big in Wareham is because it's so bad in Wareham. If you go to Bourne, if you go to Mattapoisett and Marion, we do not get these kind of levels of degraded water quality like you see in the Wee Wee Antic River, at the Wareham River, the Aguan, the inside Shellpoint Bay, Broad and Money Cove and Onset, Little Buttermilk as well. The Wee Wee Antic does not have a sewer discharge, it's all septic and cranberry, and it is one of the worst baywide. So it's, it's, it's a complicated, a number of people have mentioned how complicated the subject is, and I can't, I can't stress that enough. It is extremely complicated. It's going to take decades for the town to address this problem. This regulation is not designed to be the one fix in any way. All this was trying to do was to try not to let the problem get worse while the town's figuring out how it can expand sewer, how, how it can deal with all these problems. I've heard a lot of support in the room tonight for expanding sewer, and I think that's really encouraging, because from what we know about these estuaries, it needs a lot of expanded sewer ring. So lastly, I'll, I'll finish up with just a couple of things. We are going to continue to collect a lot of water quality data, it's all on our website. You can actually go point by point, actually see where you live and where we collect data, and see the conditions on the water. So look on the website, it's at savebuzzardbay.org, we put everything up there every year, so you can always check that out. That data, though, is not enough to tell you how much nitrogen you need to remove from where and how. That study is being done by the state right now. It is terribly, terribly delayed. The town selectmen, other boards have urged the state and the University of Massachusetts who's doing the work to get the study out. The study is now being promised by this year-end. So we are trying, and when we have that information, it'll be a great new info, information point for the town to reengage in, this issue of, how much do we need to sewer? But trying to put the finger in the dike to stop the conditions from getting worse, I congratulate the Board of Health for trying to make that case, and trying to do something proactive here, and I'm looking forward to what the Board of Health comes back with after tonight's discussion. So thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Lacava. I live in Wareham and also residential redevelopment Wareham. What we basically do is we buy a lot of the distressed abandoned homes in this town. And how I can see it impacting that level of what we do is, like Nasi was saying, like, well, we're just going to pass the cost on to, to the buyer or to the homeowner. The perfect example is a lot of the houses that we buy and we haven't sold are in that first-time affordable home buyer, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar price point. If we just added that extra twenty thousand, I guess is the round number that I'm hearing, additional cost, whether or not the homeowner agrees to buy that house from you or not, won't matter, because it will not appraise out. Banks are very tight in lending money out today to homeowners, and if I have a buyer that says, oh, I love the house and want to buy it, it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and I see a few real estate brokers in the room, and they'll probably agree with me, when they go to the bank and they do go back the last six months and they look at all those comps, comps are basically houses that sold that are comparable, and if they're all averaging out in that one seventy, one seventy-five, one eighty, they will absolutely get denied financing. So I want you to think about that too, because we're going to have a lot of properties. Well, if this passes, with me, John, Nasi, and a lot of our developers out there, we'll not be to buy these properties and improve our neighborhoods. It's going to be a real impact on the town. Now that being said, I agree, listen, I want a clean community, I want clean water, I just do not believe this is the avenue we should take. I think we need to work on this collectively, together, not fight each other on it, and really come up with a solution that's cost-effective and beneficial for everybody, for the town, so we can live in a town and be proud of Wareham.